Good evening, everyone. We're gonna start working through the agenda. This meeting's gonna be a little different than our normal meetings, which we will discuss a little bit as we start the new section or the new format of our meetings. So anyway, first thing, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So if nobody has any changes, we need a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
As presented.
As presented.
Second by Martinez. Thank you, everyone. Yes, roll call.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
We have five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is where, if anyone would like to address the board, this is their opportunity to do so. You'll have three minutes and if there's anybody here that would like to speak. Okay, good enough, then we shall move along. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So we have a motion, so I'll make this motion to make it easy. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes approved personnel recommendations per Exhibit A numbers forty-six through sixty-three, and personnel recommendations for activities, athletics, and volunteers per Exhibit B, numbers twenty-eight B through thirty-seven B as posted, the payment of bills dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of two million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents, and regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Second by Mr. Demonte.
Motion by Anderson and second by Demonte. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Car- Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Next item is the band trip. Is anybody gonna talk about the band trip?
Yeah, I'll talk about this. So they've, you know, in the past, the band did this pretty regularly because of COVID, the pandemic, we paused on that. We did throw this on here because they need kind of a timely response to make sure that the board is comfortable with them going back to Florida this year. I think it would be a great opportunity for the kids and also kind of a sign that we're back to normal.
I agree with that, actually. I think it'd be a great trip for them and we've done it before many times, so.
I have a question on it, though.
Yeah.
I have no other school districts I've heard that are returning back to these kind of trips or requiring trip insurance, just given conditions. Are we doing that or not doing that? And I'm not advocating for it, I was just curious. Yeah. Not requiring it. Yeah.
I have a question about it. In addition to band, is the school gonna go back to the, like, the general European trips that you guys used to do?
Those are run either by the Spanish department, or the history, or some other group. And they, if they wanna do a trip, they'll bring that forward, just like this. So it's not, it's not a specific one run by the administration. Each department puts on their own trip.
Newbie question?
Yep.
Do we raise money for this, or the parents pay for it, or how does this fund it?
They do raise money. They have an opportunity to raise money, and if they don't raise it all, then the parents foot the bill, or the students work, or whatever, however the parents decide.
They have fundraisers and whatever?
Yeah, most groups, they have the boosters, like this, the band boosters would be involved, and maybe they'd sell candy bars or whatever, but they, I'm sure they have fundraisers all the time, and students can probably do their own, not their own, but do it, and then that money could go towards a trip.
The travel agency, and I'll just tell you from my experience with one of my children, the travel agency that the school works with, they'll, like, you can do monthly payments, so that makes it a lot easier on the parents, too.
I think it's great that it's a sign of things going back to normal, and I think it's wonderful that you're trying to give kids the normal school experience that our kids had a few years ago, so I'm happy to see it here.
Roughly, what does it cost a parent per kid?
I didn't see it in there, but...
Just curious how much of a burden this is?
It looks like they're estimating about eighteen hundred dollars per student.
Okay, thanks.
That's pretty cheap.
Okay.
And it's really not a burden when it's an experience, that's just my opinion.
Well, how much they have to pay?
I stand corrected.
So we need a motion.
I move to approve the Warren Township High School band trip to Orlando, Florida on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, to January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
Second by Blair, Mrs. Blair. Roll call.
Motion by Demonte and second by Blair. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
And Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
So next, we're gonna go into the committee of the whole. So I move for the WTH Board of Education to move to the committee of the whole for the purpose of this section of the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, this is where we start the new section of our, our meeting, which normally we'd have a lot more business items and things to go through, and in conjunction, it talks with our Dr. Danny and everybody, we've come up with a process, which is not new, it's called Committee of the Whole, which we're going to do the first meeting of every month when we have two meetings that month. And what we're gonna do now is start with, there's three, we've separated the board into three large subject categories, which are operations, stakeholders, and student committee. And each of those encompasses all, you know, a lot of different facets of the school. The goal is to have, you know, more open conversation about different subjects as we, as we go through this, and have, you know, just discuss bigger items on a regular basis, and some smaller items as well, so. This is new for the Warren Township High School School Board, we have never done this, at least not in my seventeen years, so I think that it's, it's gonna be a good process for us, but we're, it's the first time we're doing it, so we're all a little interested to see how it's gonna work, and each two board members have responsibility for leading a, one of the sections. So we'll just kinda jump into this and see how it goes and discuss as we go. Would you like to say something?
No. Ready to take it over when you're ready.
Well, I'm first in operations, so.
All right, I'll let you go.
I don't wanna be first, but, no, I don't care. So the, Mr. Carlson and I are in charge of the operations committee, and it covers a lot of different things, which is, you know, the budget, and the facilities, and all things concerned with that, not so much with curriculum or anything like that, but, so we're gonna talk about, we really wanna talk about just a few items today, and primarily to do with school finances and the budget. So the first item that we really wanted to talk about was the, is a finance overview of how we're doing and what's been going on within the district, and I don't know if you have some slides you're gonna show, just to, yeah?
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go through the district finances slash operational part here, so.
Just quickly.
Yeah, we'll go quickly. So Danny and I wanna make this kinda quick and succinct and kinda break it down as like, almost like a finance one-on-one, so this is the kinda shortened edition, abbreviated, if you will. So we're gonna go through funds, revenue, expenditures, the annual budgeting process, along with like a calendar and date time for that, and also monthly reports. So I want you to look at this as kinda two sections, the one on the left are kind of, where there's a little bit more input, I'm not gonna use the word discretionary, but a little bit more input that the board might have in the education fund, O and M and capital projects, and on the right-hand column there, the fire, health, life, safety, transportation, IRF, debt service, working cash, and tort. There, I mean, they kinda are what they are, there's very little input, so if we can kinda focus there on the left-hand side. So the education fund, we're gonna go through, it basically, it involves the whole educational process there, all the instructional support, social workers, counselors, you name it. We also have certified teachers and administrator salaries and benefits coming out of there, we also have the teacher's retirement system, and it's kind of a catch-all for any expenditures for classroom-wise, supplies, materials, that kinda stuff throughout the year. So operations and maintenance being Fund Twenty, just think about it being like the repairs of the building, the upkeep of it, the utilities, the monthly kind of operational side of the building, if you will. Capital projects are large-scale projects, usually they have a threshold of about a half million dollars or more, or they're earmarked, earmarked funds that were bond funds used to pay for a specific project. And then fire, health, life, or safety over there, as part of our health, life, safety plan, tenure inspection, transportation is basically the busing to and from school and out, out-of-house placements for special education students. Absolutely.
What's tenure inspection?
Health, life, safety, the ROE actually comes out and they do a ten-year inspection, meaning you have ten years to get X, Y, and Z done. They prioritize it by category A, B, and C, A meaning it needs to be addressed right away, has to do with fire prevention, and not only that, but ADA compliance, and makes the school accessible.
And there's a penalty, penalty or an incentive, or what, or both or neither?
There's, there's not really an incentive, and there's really not a penalty, but they want you to, to work towards it.
Okay.
Yeah. So IRF is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, it's for classified non-union employee benefit there, debt service is the long-term debt, it's like a mortgage for the district that the district has, working cash, it's for cash flow purposes, and then tort is basically for insurance liability, workers' compensation, board legal, foreign travel, and cybersecurity. So kinda think about it, and I like how we have like this little envelopes here, like each one of is its own separate fund with kind of cash represent, so it's, it's like, when we, when we go to levy the money coming up a little bit, it's earmarked for each specific fund throughout the year. So revenue, we wanted to break it down, so there's three different types of revenue, or three different sources, if you would look at it holistically. There's local, state, and federal, so local would be local property taxes, any type of tuition, transportation that comes in through levy, investments, food service fees, and other local sources. From the state, you have evidence-based funding, special education, CTE, career in tech, and bilingual, and also transportation coming in from the state as well. And on the federal side is consistent of a lot of grants, so you look at Title One Low Income, Title Two Teacher Quality, English Language Learners for Title Three, Student Enrichment, Title Four IDA for Special Education, CTE and Career in Tech, McKinney-Vento for the homeless, Assured Medicaid funding coming in through the federal side. So as you can see in this pie chart, the big blue circle there at seventy-four percent is local revenues that come in.
You guys don't have to forgive me, I can't help it, I have to ask a question. How do we qualify for Medicaid?
Special education and matching Medicaid reimbursement for services.
That'll happen less often, believe me.
That's okay.
Good. That's what we're doing this for.
Yep. So the state sources make up sixteen percent, federal at four, then other local at six percent. So local property taxes and the different terminologies, so we'll go through it. When we go through the levy process, the, the district can only do the max of the December CPI or up to five percent, whichever is less. So with that being said, the levy is the amount of money that we ask through, ask for through the county, the extension is basically how the county extends our ask and meets the tax requirement from all of the taxing pins, if you will, throughout, throughout the county.
We always ask for way more than we get.
We, we balloon, and, yeah.
Ask for a bunch, just in case something we didn't realize comes, and you still get it.
Yeah, there's a...
Yeah, you still only get five percent, but the max, but.
Correct. So last December CPI was five percent, so, it was actually above five percent, but the max that we could ask for is five. So here's a little diagram, you can see the levy process up there on the top, takes place in November, December, so it goes to levy, then it goes to the county, that's the round circle there, the extension happens there in April, that's when the county sends out the tax bill and kinda gives us our preliminary tax rates, June and September, you could see the money's collected from the household or businesses and everybody that, you know, has property taxes there, goes to the county, and then the county disperses them, the main distribution dates are in June and September. There's a trickle effect that usually the next three or four months thereafter, little bits of it come in.
Okay, so leave that slide up.
Sure.
So we, we just passed the referendum, so there's a new, new levy that we passed in twenty-two.
Coming up in December, yeah.
Yeah, right, whatever. So, so next year's money, we're gonna get in June of twenty-three?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-three, we'll get a little portion.
In twenty-three we'll get?
Twenty-three.
But the rest of it will come in twenty-four?
The full, the full fiscal year of money coming in will be in fiscal year twenty-four.
What kind of portion in twenty-three?
It'll be whatever is the distribution amount through June. Typically... Uh, it depends, some years they've done two distributions, some years they've done three, it's varied anywhere, I would say plus or minus six, seven million dollars there in June. Twenty-twenty was the worst year.
So in June, we get, we don't get the increase?
Oh, no, we'll have an increase in June, but it'll be a portion, because we're, we're cash basis here, so we're gonna take a portion of that, but our main, so for, for calendar year, twenty-three going into twenty-four fiscal year FY twenty-three, or twenty-four, we'll get the two full payments at the full amount.
One in September and one in June.
You got it.
So we get the money in September.
We'll get a little bit there in June, but it's just, it's gonna be a portion of it. So the full, for real school year would be FY twenty-four, that'll be the full, both.
Money that comes in in June and September is really what we spend in twenty-four anyway.
Correct.
So.
If we don't know what the portion is, I'm confused.
That's a great question. It's, it's a little difficult, to be quite honest. Since we're modified cash right now, it's basically as the money comes in through the county. Like I said, sometimes in June, we've received two payments, two distributions, sometimes in prior years, we've received three. This last year, we only received two.
When will we know how many we'll receive?
Typically, we get a, that's another good question, typically, they, they send out a schedule of approximate distribution dates, okay, and we can't hold them to it, but they give us approximations of when. They're usually probably plus or minus within a week of those dates for distribution purposes.
It just, it still doesn't make any sense to me. I still don't understand why, if we're getting a portion of it in June, 'cause the levy is higher, so whatever we get in June is at the higher levy amount.
Correct, it's at the higher rate, correct.
So we get the full amount of the increase, part of it's in June, and part of it's in September, then we get it again in September, in June, and next year. And the next June, you'll get whatever the CPI was for twenty-three, on top of that.
Yep.
So we get the full amount next year, or next calendar year, one in June and one September, so we'll have the full amount of the, the bond issue increase to spend in twenty-three, twenty-four.
But it's still being broken into fiscal years?
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand that. I under, I understand where the money comes in, but we actually spend that money in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
Even though it comes in, we show it in this fiscal year, it's, it's kind of just part of the hodgepodge of stuff that makes it confusing. We're actually getting the full effect of the referendum to spend money next school year. That's the simple version, right?
Yeah, so I might have explained that incorrectly in the past, I think I was under the impression that we got some of the money next, so I apologize if, if I...
Well, that's the way, that's kinda the way it sounds, he says, we get a little bit of it in June, well, no, we don't get a little bit of it, we get whatever portion is due us in June, and whatever, the other part comes in September.
Correct.
Because, yeah, so it's, I understand, I think we, does everybody get that, yeah?
It'll be a five percent extension in June, okay, and then the first full fiscal year for FY twenty-four, be the first year that we actually have both payments coming in. Does that make sense?
We still get the full fiscal, we still get the, the bond issue increase in June.
Correct, yes, start, it starts in June, correct.
Right, so we get the full amount, we get five percent plus the increase in June.
Correct, plus whatever new growth.
And that money is gonna be spent...
And fiscal year twenty-four, 'cause that's, that's the way we're running right now.
Yeah, I understand, so, yeah.
So for, for the...
We're good.
When we start working on the budget for next year, we'll assume that money in the budgeting process?
Absolutely.
A hundred percent of that money? Okay, I apologize if I explained it incorrectly in the past.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Sitting here wondering who to believe.
We're saying the same thing, but the way that, no offense, young man, but...
Be by portion, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not a portion, it's just the portion that's attributable to that payment. You're still getting the full, you get the full amount for that payment.
Correct for that.
When you say it's a, we say you get...
But that payment is a portion?
Yeah.
I think that you're saying it's a portion, because it's a portion to that fiscal year, which is the ending of twenty-three, and then you've got another portion which goes into the fiscal year ending in twenty-four.
You get the full...
Yeah, but the one the next year goes into the same fiscal year, blah, blah, blah.
Right, but there's still portions to each fiscal year.
But where the money lands isn't as important to me, as a board member, as where we're gonna spend it, because that's what's really, that's what affects the budgeting process. What we're talking about here is where it lands, and it is, is an accounting issue of how we're gonna show the money on our, on our budget.
You gotta know how much you can spend at any given time.
We know how much we're, we're gonna have, most of that money is spent next year anyway. The June payment and the September payment cover the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and that next June payment you get in June of twenty-four is actually going for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's, everything's kinda slides forward, it's in arrears, which makes it doubly confusing, which is, you know, another reason why the cast basis is so confusing when you look at the numbers, because you're showing it this year and spending it next year, and it never, never adds up, but, anyway, thank you.
Do we do the dis... Okay, so then Lake County distributes it and disperses it out to us in June and September. So this shows kinda the timetable, so up on top are different revenue sources, and down below are just expenses, so let, let's just look at it, they're, they're not exact here, but it's just a representation, so. The blue is for state tier funding, so that's gonna be the evidence-based funding, you have CPPRT, which is variable kinda year-to-year, you also have local property taxes there in that light green, and then grants kind of in that hollow red box. So you can see for grant reporting, you report pretty much every ninety days out, so you report out quarterly for expenditures that happened ninety days ago, and you wait for reimbursement for them to come in, so it's a little bit of a cash flow, those are those. So you can see the major property tax distributions there in September and June, and then kinda the state, I will tell you, has been pretty, pretty level, if you will, like each and every month, they've been pretty good on the tenth and twentieth for distributions. Expenditures, as you can see in the beginning of the year, especially July and August, they're going to be higher, and sometimes in June, if there's capital projects or anything that we're doing throughout the summer. And then bond payments are made quarterly, so you can kinda see them, or, excuse me, every, every two months, there's, there's a different bond payment that's kinda due, so that's the district's long-term debt, if you look at it that way, that's that darker kinda color, crimson red maybe, possibly, so, so it kinda shows you the influx and the outflux, and kind of the flow throughout the year. So CPPRT is the corporate personal property tax replacement, it's the money that was collected by the state in the past, when we lost our ability to collect the personal property taxes, goes back to nineteen seventy-one, so like last year was, or last fiscal year was the highest CPPRT in this area that we've seen in ever. Businesses had a really good year, if you look at the year before, it was about one point two million dollars last year, cracked two, this year, they're expecting a forty percent decrease, so you're not gonna know exactly what it is year-to-year, it's always kind of based after the fact, if you will, you can have a little bit of estimates based on how business earnings have been doing, though. So tier funding, that's the money that the state spends based on the district associate economics and, and student demographics, tier one gets the most state assistance, and tier four gets the least, we are currently a tier one district here. And then bond repayments, this is our bond payments that go out, state of Illinois only has twenty-year terms, whether you, you're building a, a building that's gonna last fifty years, it doesn't matter, they're all twenty years. It's one of the things that the state has a little bit different than other states, that can go off longer debt, if you look at it that way, for the useful life of the building, so ours is twenty-year.
And we refi that occasionally, or?
You can, yep, if the interest rates go down, or, or, it just depends on what needs to happen and when. So here's the expenditure side, if you look at the salaries, which makes up fifty-two percent of our expenditures, okay, benefits make up nine point four, supplies and materials at four point nine, capital outlay at two point four, and then dues and fees, including special education there, at twenty point two percent, and then purchase services are at ten point six. So here's kind of a timeline of the annual budgeting process, so you can see in the beginning, the fiscal year begins July first, typically, the Board of Education approves the budget there in September, and typically in November, December, we're trying to ID and identify capital projects for summer that are going to be coming up, so there's plenty of time to bid and solicit those bids. Kinda going next, depends, it could be November or December, it's the file the levy with the county, depending on the timing, January, the board directs the administration to begin the budget process for the next year, staffing happens there in February, working with different school leaders, including lead teachers, different departments, we start working out their budgets for that next fiscal year coming up, and if there's anything that needs to be transferred or amended there by the end of the year, you have the amended budget slash transfers there in June.
So if I could say something about that, just for a second, the, the budget process starting in January, based on the changes we may or may not have coming, do you think it's something we should start earlier in January? Just because if you're gonna, we're gonna have a, you know, a big influx of money for that next year, so which we've, you know, just to make sure that we're fulfilling our promises and taking care of business.
Yeah, there's some informal work that we start already, and like the conversation, if we, if we get to conversation tonight, or the next board meeting around facilities, really, facility projects, that conversation is, hey, these are the projects that are gonna happen next summer and for multiple years, so we are starting some of that planning, this is when you formally, at a board meeting, tell us when to start, we are, but we can do that as early as you want.
I just, just wanna make sure we don't get there, and all of a sudden you say, oh, we're gonna do this, everybody goes, what? You know, I mean, you don't have to be informal, but if you have things you're...
Yep.
I'm sure we'll be talking about it before then, I'm, obviously, but...
Larger things is to kinda identify those projects that need to take place for the next summer.
Staffing?
Staffing projects, yep.
Whatever we might wanna change, what we are gonna change or not change, or whatever, but, okay. Proceed. Okay, next is the monthly superintendent's report, so these are the reports that we get on a regular basis, enrollment, attendance, discipline, staffing, and gifts to the district, they just, they're on the reports, they're in your, we get them in the agenda and the emails and different things, and so they show them, and the treasurer's report is the other one that we get, and I think that, so I guess the question is, are these a lot of reports that some of them are, may still be of interest to us, or maybe we don't need them monthly, maybe we need, don't need them so often, so I guess the, the question is, do, do all of us still feel that all these reports are still relevant to see twice a month, or once a month, or quarterly, because the enrollment and the, you know, staffing and all that stuff doesn't really change once the school year starts.
I think enrollment, we could probably do per semester, attendance, maybe quarterly, discipline, quarterly, and I don't know about the last two, but those are my suggestions.
The staffing report was really a report that, that was started back when we started making changes to the staff on a pretty regular basis, so it was part of the way that we, as a board, kept our eye on the ball, saying, make sure that we didn't, weren't adding people inadvertently, because, or, or if we did, at least we knew why, that it was required, or whatever the case may be. I don't know that that's gonna be something we have to see all the time now, 'cause I don't envision us making a lot of staffing cuts in the near future, I expect it to go the other way in some fashion, so, but still, it's a good report to have, just... So, um, but still, it's a good report to have, just know what your total employee count is in the district. It's just a matter of whether it needs to be updated every, every meeting. And I, I don't think it does, but I mean, that's, I don't know what everybody else would think, but.
So something like staffing.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me when there's a change.
Right.
So I, I kind of view that as, as needed. Enrollment, once the school year starts, it generally stays the same. Move-in, move-outs, but it's nice to see that yearly number particularly.
And it also fluctuates after Chris, after winter break. So I think it's good to have it after winter break.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. It won't hurt anything to have it. Um, but there is going to be some move-in, move-out numbers, but generally, it's around the same spot. So I'm comfortable, whether it's once a year or twice a year. I like seeing discipline regularly. I like seeing attendance regularly. I think those are two things that as community, it's nice to keep our eye on. I, it, it, discipline more, probably even more so than attendance. Just, we get asked those questions, I, and it's, tends to be a rather hot topic, so it's nice to see that on a regular basis. And then gifts to me is just as you need to accept them, like, kind of like, um, staffing. So I'm not sure, in your procedure, in order to use these gifts, let's say somebody donates a gift card, like, do we have to accept it before it gets used? Or could be after the fact? So like, if it needs to be accepted before it's used, then it should be on a regular basis, because you need to use these things. If it's just a formality, then however often you want to do it. So that's my feedback.
Quarterly would certainly be all right with the gifts in the district. And if there's no gift, then you don't have to do it at all.
No.
But you plan on doing it quarterly, but if there isn't one, then you just skip it.
I, I like the word change. One of the changes we need to know about them in general, but I like your, uh, your super reports. I like to know what you've been doing this week. And I'd like to add to that, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'd like to know what's coming up in the couple of weeks, and if you want any of us by. I've got a lot to learn and, you know, a couple of field trips wouldn't hurt me at all, if I know they're coming up. If you want to do that, just, you know, directly to me, that's fine, but, uh, I'd like to see that.
Good feedback.
Okay. Then the last one is the dreaded monthly treasurer's report, which, not that it's dreaded, but it's. It, it's.
No offense to Mike.
No, it's nobody's fault.
He works hard.
There's a lot of, well, I think that there's a lot of detail in that report that, that we probably don't need to see all the time. It's good to have it and you review it, but we don't have to go over all of it all the time. And sometimes we, no offense, Mike, we go over the same information three times in the same report. And I think, so I, what I would like to see is a way to whittle it down to kind of a, more of a dashboard concept that we go over. Or maybe we even don't even have to do that every month, but we can do it so often. But we get information, all the detailed information is still there. You can still see it and you can still read it if you want, but we don't have to go over it in the meeting unless you have a question. And then we would ask a question hopefully before the meeting, so Dr. Angles would have a chance to, to look into it, but, but anyway, so what I was, this is just a suggestion, just someplace to start, but I came up with basically three things that we could look at. And one is that, do you have those in here?
I think I've got the ones that you asked me for. Let's see.
Okay.
Is that one?
This one.
Okay.
This one, I think, is valuable, because it really shows how our funds are moving, up and down and everything. So I think this, this report is a great to see how we're doing versus last year. Is this, is the slide changing, you know, so, because that could show you some systemic problems that we're unaware of. So I think this is a great chart. What I don't like about this chart is the fact that the number at the year-end changes constantly. But what, what I would like to see this report do is, in the beginning of the year, when you first print this out, it shows a number at the end of the year, based on the funds you expect to get. Right? Because you get them in June and September. But what happens is, as we go towards the end of the year, the next June payments start dumping into that report and basically destroys it, because then it has no value. It doesn't show you how you've done based on that original number. Right? So if the, if you don't dump in the June numbers into this, the June income into this, you show what we spent based on the, the income that we got and how the fund balance has reacted to that. Because the June money makes it, distorts it to the point that the number goes way up and you go, well, why is that going up? I thought we weren't making, we had a bad cash flow. So it just makes it confusing. So if we could just pick it, a number at the beginning of the year, it's somewhat arbitrary, obviously, but at least we have us an idea of how that number changes during the, I'm sorry, I didn't turn my phone off. I apologize for that. The, um, so anyway, that's what I would like to see that look like. But this is one chart I think is, has valuable. And then these.
We got this right. Is this the right, oops.
That's good, that's good.
Before you go on.
Yeah.
Um, are these, and realize this is committee the whole, it's not a normal meeting, but are, are these charts accessible here?
We get them.
I can read that in a million years.
Yeah, we get that every month.
But I mean.
Every meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. And basically, that shows your fund balance dipping all the way down into June. But what you really should see is the fund balance continuing to go down. But it's not, we don't want it to pop back up until next year, because that money really isn't for this year. It's for next year. But that's why you, because you don't really see how low the fund balance goes.
Yeah, it, it doesn't accurately depict the bottom.
Yes, understood. Anyway, so then this one is the fund balance with the, is that expenditures or just fund balances?
It's rev- it has a fund balance in January, revenues, expenditures, and then the fund balance for fe- February.
Right. So what I, so the fund balances, to me, are, is a good thing, because it shows you how your money's going out of each one. But there's another one that shows you how you're doing. Year-to-date compared to last year. So what I'd like to see is that one, the revenue one for that year-to-date, and then the expenditures, year-to-date. Two different, two different slides.
Do you know who he's talking about, Mike? I picked the wrong one.
No, that's okay. This is.
I know, but you want to broke it down instead of. Revenues.
And I want the year-to-date, and I want, this is what I want. I want how we're doing versus the budget. How we're doing versus la- how, how we're doing versus last year, and then, you know, the actual, you know, and all that. Because what, what you're trying to see is how we're doing. The percentages are the interesting numbers. The dollar amounts are what they are. But the percentage are, which, each month you say, oh, we're at forty-three percent. But last year, we were at thirty-nine percent. Okay, that requires an explanation. But I don't need to know all the numbers in each fund. You know what I'm saying? I mean, the numbers are, we want to see the numbers, but the percentages on those charts, you know, so, I don't know if the chart or bar, but it shows how much. Right, it shows how much we spent, percentage of the total budget to this date, but we want to compare it to last year. Actual to budget and blah, 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 so. And those are the three, only three slides, I think, that we would go, we don't even have to get them every month. We can get them every month, but whether Mike has to go over them every month. But if there's a change in it, then we would have questions and he would go over it. He could explain what it is. But we'd narrow it down to basically three slides. Unless somebody wants to see something more different or more. We could just try it and say, no, I don't like that. Let's change it to this or whatever. I, I don't care, but that's the thought process that.
Would we still involve, um, when Mike gives us the total of what we're approving each month for expenditures? I mean, I like seeing that. Is that part of this?
Yes, we would still need to include that.
The consent agenda, you mean? Yeah, the consent agenda would be, all that'll be the same. This is just the treasurer's report, which is that report that has
Yeah.
thirty pages to it, and then he talks about ten pages.
Yeah, we're, we're still going to need to include a lot of that detail.
The data, yes.
But we can pull these reports that you're referencing up to the top.
Pull those three up together, and we could, Mike, you and I could talk about this and look at it before you do the next one, just so we can.
I was thinking, if you wanted, like, here we are, year-to-date expenditure, here we are compared to last year expenditure-wise, and then just do it quarterly, something like that. That way you can see trends. I, I mean, that might be.
What I'm trying to see is really what the percentages are this year versus last year. The amounts don't, aren't as interesting to me as how we're progressing, based on how we did last year versus this year, as a percentage of the budget, because that's, that's really the, the telltale sign that something's off the track. If it's way different than it was the year before, then you go, well, why is that way different? But looking at individual, all these numbers is, doesn't, we can look at them, but it'd take me, you know, hours to digest that, not five minutes, so. That's why the percentages, you take a quick look and you go, well, I need to look into, then you can go back in the details and dig in all the other stuff.
So here, here's a operational question. Would you want it broken down by fund or just aggregate?
Well, I'd have to go back and look at all those charts, but yeah, the fund, I think people like to see the funds. I'd, I'd like to see it. You like to see, because you want to know what it is. But the real information is the percentages. You could put the, the percentage adjustments by fund if you wanted to. I mean, we could do whatever we want, but you and I should, you know, we'll talk about it.
Definitely.
And then we'll, we'll come up with three charts and then everybody can dive in after that. I think that's better. Okay? Any other thoughts on reports? We still have a few minutes left in our session, which we're going to talk about the facilities. What we, what our projects may or may not be next year. We have a list of nine thousand things that we may or may not need to do.
We do. So separated, my, my preface of this is.
So we've got, for some people, this isn't, this isn't news, but we have a good list of deferred maintenance. That, we went through this list a couple of times since the last board meeting, because I think Tom mentioned, hey, this might be a good thing to look at. So what we did is we, we tried to prioritize these into, hey, this is something we need to look at in the next zero to three years, so immediately up to three years. Something that's more three to five years, and then five to ten years. And then we had kind of a four, which is, we would love to do this, but, um, priority-wise, it might not be at the top. And so you can look at the first page, there has the Almond Campus Priority One projects. When the administration first looked at this was, for example, one point six million dollars in the next three years, and then three to five years is twelve point four. Uh, and then we get to priority three and four, and that's a little over a million bucks. We could, we did the same thing for O'Plane. Zero to three is twelve point seven. Priority two is, uh, which is years three to five, is seven point two, and then priorities three and four. Priority three is a half, a half million bucks, and then when you get into priority four for a plane, you're talking about things like a new pool renovating the auditorium, so that's close to fifty million dollars.
How, how long have we had our pool? Yeah, how, what's the lifespan right now of the pool? Oh.
Way beyond its life. It was basically dropped into a gym. It wasn't a building built for a pool. It was a gymnasium, and they put a pool in there. There's a lot of rust in the ceiling. We've redone that a few times, and redone the pumps a few times. Huh?
What about mold?
I don't think anybody's looking.
How often is this reviewed?
So, uh, that, so to continue my preface, this hasn't been reviewed, um, intensely in many years. Because we've been in no-spend mode for so many years. Mike's team has really been putting out fires, and Jose's here tonight. Thanks for coming, Jose, in case people have questions. So we've really been in putting-out-fire mode. So when you're in putting-out-fire mode.
Only if it's broken.
Only if it's broken. When you're in putting-out-fire mode, we're not putting a whole lot of effort into this type of list, because we know there's not a lot of, there's no money to spend on it. So this would be, this is kind of our first draft at it. What it means is there's multiple millions of dollars that we probably need to dis- at least discuss with deferred maintenance. If the board's interested in looking at your levy process differently and putting more money into, uh, these types of projects moving forward, then we would probably go back at it again and try to tighten up, uh, the details on it, because the list has not really thoroughly been looked at for a good number of years.
Buddy, we're interested in, uh, adding to the list in terms of security. Ma- you know, that sort of thing, things that we haven't talked about. Would it be this list or a diff- is this a, this is a maintenance list to fix things?
Yeah.
Was that a different list?
It's facilities.
Yeah, security would be a different list.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this, one thing I want to know, are the roofs in this? So, is, everybody, and maybe Steve, you probably don't know, you weren't here, but the, we did a, an exhaustive study on our roofs last.
I agree about it.
Yeah. So there's mi- multi-millions of dollars worth of work that needs to be done on the roofs. It can be spread out over time. And to me, just looking at this list, there's some of this stuff that looks like it's, it'd be nice to have, and some of it, there's the gotta-have. Because it's broken enough that it has, that it's not safe or something like that, you know? Like a new air conditioning unit for the weight room, if it's not broken, then we don't need a new one.
Yeah, so maybe let's talk through.
So there isn't one there, then that's good. They're tough kids. They're football players.
I'll tell you, I was in that room for open house, and I couldn't stand being there like thirty seconds. I had to get out.
Well, I'm not, I'm, that was just an example, but.
But the weight room's got to be sweaty.
Right.
No, but you also have to have circulation for the kids to breathe. I don't want my kid in there. I'll tell you that.
So all I'm saying is, we, when we take a look at this, we need to do some more looking at what we really need to do versus now. Because some of this can be drug out. I mean, there's no question about that. But some of it needs to be done. I, that's, the roofs, we can't have water pouring into the building. So I think the roofs are one of the projects that we have to start at some point, whether it's this summer or next summer or whenever it is, but we, we have, we've been, we've been band-aiding those, especially at O'Plane for a long time.
Didn't Mike say at one of the meetings that we were going to start this summer and do it over a period of a couple of years?
Uh, that, that would be the ideal situation.
Yes.
Right, no, I'm not saying that it would be over, the whole roof over a summer. I'm saying you, didn't we talk about?
A cou- yeah. Over four, four years.
Yeah.
Kind of address.
Areas.
Would it be off the wall to suggest we save thirty million dollars and make a deal with Gurnee and use the pool at Hunt Club Park?
An indoor pool.
Indoor?
Our pool's indoors.
I ask be indoor?
Well, they use it in the, swimming is in the, in the wintertime, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Questions about a couple, could I ask questions about a couple of things on here? So when I'm looking at this, I'm just looking at the next five years. So how much is it going to cost us to hit items on the next five years? I agree, the, we could go through the list again and, and try to prioritize it a little bit more. But in the next five years, we do have some pretty high-level projects, so if we could just maybe, um, I've, I've got maybe four or five. I'm curious if you'd like to. We can talk through those. Replacing the air handling unit at Almond, replacing the almond roof. Um, the new lockers, locker brew, a new locker room at O'Plane, the UN events at O'Plane, and the air handling units at O'Plane. So maybe, Jose, could you explain to us what air handling units are? You can jump up to the mic here.
Buddy, the air handling units are, uh, units that are inside the building, which draw air from the outside. They have ductworks that go outside. You draw an air and, uh, send it to various sections of the building. So each indoor unit, uh, there's some that are, you know, right at their mark. They need to be replaced, updated. We did do, we did do the controls not too long ago. Control-wise, we are good. It's the mechanicals that we need to start looking at. Uh, they have a certain lifespan. So once we get into their end, the end game, it starts getting expensive trying to band-aid everything. So the more we, we, what we want to do is be proactive and not chasing ourselves like we are with the roof right now. And with everything skyrocketing as far as pricing and, and, uh, parts and you name it, it, it's hard to even get now. And, um, that's our worry. We want to be able to work on these items and start looking at them as opposed to getting into, uh, oh, great, now we're at this and we can't replace it. We have various options, but, uh, it's very important to keep that air circulation going in these classrooms and keep, uh, you know, keep the rooms in a place and environment where the kids can learn and, um, we all know that, but we just got to really. But we just gotta really hit these, these certain items here and start getting, just like the roof. Unfortunately, being deferred so many years, it's getting, it's getting worrisome. So we, we need to start looking at it. And seeing, phasing them in, we can get into a replacement, get an assessment on different ages of units. Or we can rehab, rebuild them, which is one idea that Train came up with. This is, you don't have to necessarily spend everything, all the money on brand new. Just refurbish them and start going that route. Cause it is an older building. We can't make that building, you know, 2024.
Paint or this one, or both?
Both. I mean, this one's already at the 20 some years. So we have to start maintain, getting into the maintenance of all of both sites. O'Plane especially is our nightmare. It's unfortunate, but you know, that's why we're here. We gotta come up with the solutions and, and keep moving forward. But we do, we do need that help in the maintenance aspect of it.
Yeah. So just with locker room roofs and air handling units over the next five years, we're at probably about 20 million bucks. And so one thing that we probably need to know is even if we take, go through this list and prioritize things like the air conditioning. Do, would you like us to look more specifically at these, to try to cost them out more precisely? And do you want us to look at levying differently? So we're putting less money into the ed fund now that we have the referendum? And we can start funding the other funds with more dollars. That's part of the, I think, the conversation. That's good to have.
I'd like to see some assistance in prioritizing these and maybe some kind of a matrix system relative to safety, health. Expense, obviously, liability in terms of things we have to do. We've got to come up with some kind of grid that, that we can override, but at least gives us a perspective in terms of how much these are important in reference to others.
You know, you're hitting on something what everyone, I would imagine, Danny on your team, probably is coming at this from a different vantage point. What's important to one may not be important to other, others. I always like to look at this stuff kind of philosophically as how many kids are impacted by the change. So forget the dollars for a second. Forget which department it falls under. But can we get the biggest bang for the buck? Like if it impacts every, health, life, safety, for sure. We talked about the tenure plan. Some of that money just may be, some of these projects may just be identified by virtue of that. And those might even be off our list because we have to do them because they're ranked high. But others might be, it impacts all of our kids because everybody uses this. Or things that impact one classroom probably are further down on the list because it impacts just that one classroom. So there might be a way to, is, is looking through the lens of like, who gets the benefit of the change? Afterlife safety and some of that stuff in that matrix. Otherwise, it's, it's hard. Cause like Mike might say, you know, I really need stoves in the kitchen, you know? And then Chris may say, yeah, but we need updated science labs because they haven't been touched in forever. And, you know, Pat may say there's some, I don't know. So I'm just.
On the football field.
Right. It's like, and what's happening.
By the way, we do need turf.
Right. And I, I think we need to be cognizant of what sometimes happens in this instance where we get a windfall. I don't want to say windfall, but after not spending forever, money's been identified. Now everybody wants a piece of that pie. And then how to do it in some kind of like fair way.
Please fashion.
Correct.
Agreed.
So I don't know what, you're right that it needs to be done. I'm not sure I'm the one to necessarily decide that. Maybe that's a Dr. Danny question.
Cause we have to decide it. I'm looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that from what her base coming at on the, the air circulation and stuff like that, if he's. Asking and presenting that piece in itself, that should, because that's the topic of it, is that should definitely be priority. Cause that goes to the airflow and circulation of how our kids are breathing within the building on top of our staff. So that in itself, you know, maybe you guys can come back and do an analysis of, hey, if we refurbish, it's going to cost this. If we do, you know, like give us a different, I guess, like a, like a different bid on different scenarios to start off.
Yeah. And maybe I'm assuming, maybe this was already done internally, like, and maybe not. So I don't want you to say if it was or wasn't. But, you know, maybe, just kind of making this up, like you take this list that somebody created. And if it wasn't you guys all involved, prioritize what's most important to you and your respective departments and areas and facilities, then match. And you might find some commonalities like, hey, this was a high priority item for all of us. You know, something to that effect. If this is treated just as a pure facilities list, then what Jose has to say, you know, I, you have, you know, you and between you and Mike, you clearly know what the district needs. But then I'm also seeing stuff like PE equipment and other things on here. So I'm not convinced it's a hundred percent facilities list either. So great start. This is a wonderful, thoughtful, capital projects kind of planning, which is what I would hope people would do. Particularly knowing the money is coming. So, yeah, that's just my feedback on how to best make sure it's spent in the.
So do you have enough to come back with another report next time?
So what I, what I hear is we should, especially since we haven't really had a directive to go, to really spend some time on this. We should go back, look at the list, use some other factors other than just the amount of time that we think it needs to be addressed in. Such as safety, health, life, safety, student impact, maybe staff impact, the departments, kind of how, how much of an impact it has. And then also include some possible different scenarios. We can definitely work on that and come back pretty quick with that.
This is maybe a loaded question, but I don't look at this as a, as a wish list, more like a needs list.
Most of that, I think we would consider needs.
Any kind of a scenario that you can predict. What percentage of this list can we do? What I need to know. Thank you.
Good enough for me. That's all we had. So we can move on to the next group, which is.
We're doing stakeholders next?
Stakeholders.
So in the stakeholder committee, it's Tom and I. So with Dr. Danny, we've talked about three topics that we have on our first stakeholder committee meeting, which is strategic planning, communication plan, and the district foundation. Dr. Wilson spoke a bit about strategic planning last month with, at our board meeting. But I think we need to discuss how we want to move forward with our strategic planning this year so he can start working on that plan. So it would be for us priority to start giving guidance and him providing us with feedback so we can start on that planning. He provided the board with examples of strategic planning and another, and other school districts to have helped. Sorry, I'm reading from notes here. He's provided the board with examples of strategic planning that other school districts have to help us think about what path we need to take. So in discussion, I think some of the things that we, some of the things that we might want to talk about is what worked well with our last strategic, strategic planning process? What could be improved? What worked well regarding our annual planning process with the most recent plan? And what could be improved within that? What worked well regarding how administration provided updates to the Board of Education and what could be improved on that? Who should be involved in a long-term planning process? And how do we want different stakeholders to be involved? What options should we provide to the stakeholders? There's a lot of.
That's plenty.
You think that's plenty? I'm going to go on.
Yeah, go ahead.
When, when do we want to start this planning? So I think actually let's pause there. I think we should give him an idea right now on how fast we want to start this. So we, we can come back in the next board meeting.
So I can go first if you want me to.
Yep.
I, I think we are standing on the precipice of an opportunity to change this district that may only come along once in our lifetime. Educationally, I'm talking about. I think we have an opportunity here to do some things differently. If we, you know, if we so choose. And that could start next year. I mean theoretically, because the money comes in next year. We don't have to do it next year. We could wait a year and do it differently. So I think it's, you know, I think it's time we, the strategic plan needs to start as soon as we can start. Because it's a, and we've been talking about it. We have a lot of thoughts. We're going to improve, you know, social work and mental health and the stuff. But we still need to know, you know, how are we going to do that? How are we going to carry it forward? How are we going to help students? How are we going to do whatever? I mean, it's more, it needs more detail. And I, you know, strategic plan to me sometimes starts with this overarching umbrella and, but doesn't come in with a focus. I don't know. Maybe this time we should start with more of a focus on, you know, on our, the structure of our educational process. We can't change the whole thing, obviously, but there's some things we can do differently. So.
So what you're saying is actually a great segue to the next bullet point that I have on here, which is how should the strategic plan acknowledge different parts of the districts? Example, teaching, finance, facilities, staffing, partnerships, et cetera. Are we going to focus one by one? Are we going to focus on multiple? I think that we start with a small group and multiples and then build from there. But I don't know what everyone else might think of that.
So I'm going to try to tie all this together. So last meeting, I already stated my preference to let teachers and kids kind of build relationships this year and take a breather. But that being said, when we go down this strategic planning road, I would imagine we're going to do it well. And we're going to reach out to all those groups. Some of those goal areas or strategies or priorities for us need to be backed up with budget. It can't just be in vain. Comparing that to the finance committee that we just saw, thank you, Mike. Where you guys start preparing the budget in January, there may be a conflict there at least for one year. Because I don't think we can do a thorough, I'm just kind of thinking out loud. I'm not sure we could do a thorough strategic planning process by the time you're. Well, although in June usually we, you know, and I know we can always in September amend the budget, but the two may not align. So as we do a very thoughtful, thorough planning process, I would love to see, and it may not be next year, maybe the year after, but some kind of budget alignment to the goals as well. All these things tie together. So like Natalia's question was like, how do they all play? You know, and I think they're all going to play together. So whether it ends up being next year or the following year, we gotta somehow back up with dollars, the priorities that we set in this plan too. So that may not be clean. I, I, I'm open to starting earlier. I'm not going to be like, you know, you know.
Right. So it goes back to the question, are we going to then tackle one by one? Are we going to do multiple? So are we, are we going to group it or should we just start then one by one?
Areas or?
Pardon?
What do you mean?
So like, are we going, are we going, okay, so like, as we start tackling down the different topics, are we going to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to look at just at how we're going to incorporate teaching, for example? Or are we going to combine finance with teaching and that, or facilities with finance?
I'm just basing this off of other times that I've done strategic planning. I, one, when you have a very good cross section of stakeholders that go through this, we're going to ultimately come out with three to five goal areas. One of those likely is going to be teaching and learning. Another one's likely going to be budgeting and finance. Another one's going to be, you know, probably community connections or family connections. You know, they all typically run similar. And then in there are strategies. Now those are going to be built off of a whole lot of work from that body that is going to be meeting or surveys we're going to get thrown out. We're going to want to capture everything. And then eventually they're going to develop action plans and action steps. And some of those are going to need to be funded by us and our priorities may shift a little based on that. Let's give an example. So let's say we've identified communications. This isn't just, just an example. Let's, we've identified communications as a very strong need here in the district. And I remember the old plan, we've been talking about a communications director, just somebody identified that can help bridge what district is doing with the community. We're doing a great job now. A lot of stuff being done. It's being done by a lot of people, but is it being done in a very thoughtful, kind of strategic communication plan way?
Which is my next topic.
So I guess, and that would be a funded position of which would tie in. So I'm not sure we could answer all that now, I guess.
I'm just trying to get an overview of how, how can we get Dr. Danny and his team started?
I don't see how you could do it. Sections, because each section will impact the other section. It almost has to be an overarching thing, I think. I mean, because you decide to do all this and you go, well, yeah, but we need to do that.
So are you guys open if they look at other districts to see how other districts are incorporating within? And then to see if maybe we can not reinvent the wheel and maybe take a hash pass of here and there and then.
If I remember correctly, some of your training is in strategic planning. If I remember digging up information on you correctly. It's a strength of yours. So if you're leading it yourself and not bringing in an outside facilitator, he could almost begin soon. And I'm willing to bet he, everything I just said, he already knows and then some, and is probably correcting him, me in his mind. And so like, I'm not going to pretend he, no, he knows. So like, it's just really, does he have the green light to begin now? Should he begin now? It's really probably my guess.
Yes.
And I would almost think he would need to start thinking about that now, especially as we start to budget, especially knowing we're asking him, how do you spend the referendum dollars? Well, that's going to go hand in hand with the vision that we've hired him to help implement. So that's the best I can give you is let him, let the expert begin thinking about it.
Well, I agree with that. Cause one of the other things too is, you know, how much do we want to, as the board, do we want to be involved in this process? Or do we want to let them do most of the planning, then present to us and this just, us just say, okay, yeah, I agree with that. Like let's move forward that or no, let's revisit this. Or do we want to give input on the direction? Which I think that aligning to a little bit of what you're saying, we should just let them do their thing and then bring it to us. And then we kind of figure out from there if it's.
No, we're a stakeholder in the process.
Right. But they, but they're still the, the frontline.
Yeah. We're going to be the ones that ultimately adopt the strategic plan.
They're, they're the frontline, not us.
About some added documents for discussion. And you were talking big picture versus action plan. And I like moonlight and Zion bent in action plans. Don't reinvent the wheel. Just for what it's worth, my two cents.
I think a board members, whether everybody has to be involved or just some, I think somebody has, because you, you have to have some window into it. So you guys don't go off in a track and you come back and we all go, what?
Yeah.
That seems weird. You know, and I don't know that, you know, there's, there's to be a lot of behind the scenes work done too, obviously. But I don't, you know, I'm, I'm open to either way, not involved or involved. But I think going all the way down the path of the strategic plan and coming up with a plan and then come to us and say, oh, by the way, do you guys think this is okay? Could be a huge waste of time. Not that I think you would do a poor job.
I'm not going to do that.
Yeah. Well, you would be coming back to us on a regular basis anyway, I would assume. So I'm open to either way, but I just don't, I don't, I want to do it as efficiently as possible for everybody involved. That's all, whatever that is.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to our annual communications plan, which is the, so out of the three, this is, this is something that obviously we as an admin, you know, like we've been, we've given administration some really good feedback on what we're looking for to see through the district. So I'm thinking that like sometime next month, they could come back with us with the plan, right, on our annual communications.
Yeah, we can talk about it next month. I have something if you want to talk about it now, if you'd like to do that. So Natalia talked to me about starting to put together, just generally where I would start or what my, my plans are for this year. So I'd probably put those in six, probably six areas. The first would be updating the website theme and content. We've done a lot of that initially, but we have a lot of work on the content to do this year. Consolidate and systematize email messaging. We started working on that and sent out a consolidated parent email last night. consolidated parent email last night. That will try to do weekly. Looking at professionalizing the templates that we use to communicate so that, uh, parents can process that information efficiently. Look at updated family notification platforms. That was something that was in, uh, the strategic plan, uh, in the past for different reasons. Some of those being language and some of those being ease of use. I do want to talk through the possibility at some point this year of, uh, communications position. Um, and then looking to see if there are other partners that we can work with, uh, to communicate through. Right now, uh, the regular communication pieces that we have are we, are sending out a weekly emails to staff and we started doing those to families. I am doing a monthly Facebook Live. Uh, we're going to look at quarterly finance and facility updates for those who are interested. In the summer, we do a physical mailer through Gurnee. Uh, but also I'm looking at doing one of those again in the spring, just basically everybody within the school district boundaries. And our social media strategy right now, um, we are trying to put up two or three items a week at least. Some of those are celebrations. This is what the students did and some of those are upcoming events. Um, I'm doing the monthly live. We are sending out now a weekly invites to people to follow the page if they comment or like or something. There'll be maybe a hundred and fifty or two hundred of those. And then if we invite them to follow us, then they're more likely to see our stuff in the future. And then at some point during this year, I'd like to talk with our, uh, administrators about professional presence on LinkedIn. That's generally, um, what, what I've been, that's what I'm planning on doing this year, but if you have feedback for that, I'd, I'd love to. For example, Mr. Carlson mentioned, uh, something that would probably would be great is if I give you an update on things that I'm doing the next week that you would be welcome to come to. And that would be a good communication portal for the board members and the district stakeholders to see you. So I wrote that down, uh, but if you have any other feedback, I'd love that now, or we could talk about it again next month.
Were you going to talk about hiring a person today or are you just going to talk about that next month?
I'll talk about that anytime you're willing to talk about it. That's part of my annual, that was like annually, at some point this year, I want to talk about it. But if you want to talk about it today, I'd be happy to do that.
Feel free.
Yes. Okay, so we did, we've had, um, probably the backdrop of this is we have had, uh, handful of years we partnered with Donovan Group, uh, for communications and they provide a lot of communication support.
Since the first referendum try.
Since the first referendum try, yeah. And I think my impression is that the, the district recognized they needed a professional presence with communication to make sure people understood, uh, the referendums that were happening and we wanted to make sure we put out accurate information. So since the referendum passed and since I've been here, we really utilized them very, very little. And so, um, they contacted us, well, we, we all, we did a touch base with them and they proposed that maybe we put a pause on that retainer because the amount of services that we were using was so low.
Were they hired to pass referenda in the past? Is that their, their function?
They're just hired to help, uh, school districts communicate about referendum question. That's why we hired them in the past.
Right. It is.
Sure.
So we didn't need them because we had some other people doing that, basically.
Right now, right now, I think, so part of what they were doing is they were helping us with mailers. They were, uh, posting social media content, even that didn't have to do with the referendum. Uh, they were proofing, uh, communication that was sent out to parents. They'd give us.
There was really two different efforts too in the referendum. There was the vote yes group. Vote yes group. Yay! And then there was what the school was doing, which was theoretically just informational. So that was, so I think that's what Donovan was helping the school with their messaging going out, because we didn't have anybody even to take the time to sit down and do it a lot of times, so that.
And they were doing other things, but.
Yeah, there were other things too, but the referendum was part of it. Now, we stopped using them, so those funds are available, is what you're saying to do something.
I'm saying those funds are available. It would be, yep. So I got about three thousand bucks a month.
Will be a part-time job then.
Correct.
Let's do it.
Say we can't vote on something in this forum, so we can.
But what I, but what I can do.
Proposal on that in the future though.
What I can do is bring back a job description, uh, to the next board meeting, so you can talk about it and vote on that formally. That'd be great.
One of the last bullet points for this one would be, uh, are there any opportunities for the board members who want to be involved in communication efforts in the, efforts in the community? So there's anything that?
Yeah, so Steve specifically, I think you mentioned that. So I, I don't know, are there, if there are items that you're interested in being part of, I think the suggestion there is a good one and probably answers that.
You could put out something every periodically, week or whatever, like here's what's coming up. We'd like to see some of you guys.
Great. Great, I can do that.
So we're talking about like, um,
Like, for example, I went to a benefit at, with the ma, that the mayor held
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
a couple of weeks ago. And actually a board member recommended I go. I probably in that situation could have just said like, hey, do any other board members want to go with me? It was a great suggestion. I met a lot, a lot of people. It was good for me to, to meet new people in the community. So I can start doing that. I'll start doing that this Friday.
I really like your Friday newsletters.
Thanks.
And then last, last on the, on the three topics that, uh, we've talked about in the stakeholder committee that it's important to us is, um, the district foundation. So the district foundation is something that, um, I've been interested in since I joined the board, you know, so the past year and a half or so, where I think that right now is the perfect opportunity for us to, um, take and to restart with, um, any energy, energies that might have been put in the, in the past due to the pandemic. And then, you know, we can start bringing it back up and hopefully, uh, starting the foundation back up and having some definite, you know.
Is it operational at this point?
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, like, let's revive it.
It, it used to be operational. Is it now just completely defunct?
It's not completely defunct. If you want, Jean can go through a little bit of history and kind of where they're at right now. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Is that helpful?
Yes, please.
So, um, the foundation actually was initiated in November of two thousand, which was a group of community members who took the necessary steps to make a dream come true for the students of WTHS. This was their goal. The foundation is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation and they do have their papers filed with the attorney general's office as well as with our district office. Their mission is to support initiatives that enhance and enrich educational opportunities for WTHS students. So they solicit and dis, and disperse funds that cannot be covered by the district's operating budget. These are just additional programs or initiatives that they'd like, teachers would like to see happen that wouldn't be covered by our budget. They receive donations, um, which are tax deductible and they may also qualify for different companies. So in other, in other words, companies sometimes match whatever their donation would be. Some of their donation, um, opportunities, I want to make sure I'm following along here, would be they have the WTHS Hall of Fame, which is currently housed out in the, um, Almond entryway. We have twenty-nine recipients who have received this honor and this is an honor that's been going since nineteen eighty-two. So that was, that, they do a buy a brick. We called it a celebration wall because it isn't totally all in memory of. But that wall is housed outside of, right at the entrance of the cafeteria at the opening campus here in the entryway.
So let me, let me interrupt you really quick on that one. So the shanty, when they did their remodel, they did something similar where you would buy a brick and in the new layout of the foundation that in the hallway between the old shanty to the new shanty, they were charging like fifty bucks, right? So anyone who wanted to be part of this brick hallway, you paid fifty bucks and, you know, you displayed your family name or your name. I mean, we could definitely do something or have the foundation that once we create, um, you know, some, some members in this. That would be an idea that we could do on, on a wall here or on a, on a hallway. I'm thinking out, I'm thinking out loud right now.
Sure.
We could, uh, so instead of a brick, we could, uh, have a roof shingle. And then maybe if we have like fifty thousand people that donate, we could get a new roof. I'm saying we need to think creatively here. So, no one would see it.
Let's start a GoFundMe for our roof. We only need four million people, it's fine.
I'd like the finance committee to take back the roof shingle idea, please. Next month, I'd like a report on the feasibility. Thank you.
So, so basically the buy a brick, uh, we have a celebration wall there and graduates have bought them, family have bought them. Certain bricks have been in memory of staff members who have passed away. Different organizations have done that. And that is all up on the wall as you walk into the building as well. And that is by donation as well. I think the bricks are two hundred dollars and five hundred dollars, depending on what size. We talked about the Hall of Fame. So there's a grant program that the foundation established and between the years of two thousand and four and two thousand and nine, they had about forty thousand requ, or four, forty requests and provided about thirty-five thousand dollars to different, um, staff members in their programs. They offer scholarships, two five hundred dollar scholarships each year to two graduating seniors. And they are currently in the names of the Jeff Spivey Memorial Scholarship. Jeff Spivey was the initiator of the foundation and, and started the whole program back in two thousand. And we also have the Doc May Scholarship, which is also, uh, a memorial scholarship. Let's see, we talked about the hundred year celebration. The foundation was very active. They partnered with us. They basically raised approximately sixty thousand dollars. They provided T-shirts for all of the kids. They sponsored all the banners that were downtown, um, Gurnee. They hosted this centennial gala. And they also funded the, um, publication of the one hundred year anniversary book, which is, by the way, still for sale. If anybody wants to buy one.
It will be for the next hundred years.
No, we don't have that many left at all. Let's see, the commu.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the communication. So there's fundraising opportunities. They've have an email database that has been created over the years. They had a Facebook page. They do Gurnee Days booth, um, when they were hosting the booths. They've done homecoming parades. They used to do a tailgate concession at the end of the parade up at the high school and they would provide tours.
Okay, so can I ask you?
Sure.
Do we have actual people in this organization right now, like, active? Because, you know, I, I had a student graduate in two thousand and eighteen. I have another student now and never have I heard of the foundation. I know that foundations exist in a district just because of my experience with other districts, but what I would like is, um, like, how, how can we as the board reach out to this group or can we, can the district invite people in so we can revive this and really make it something that is going to be a success?
All they need is people.
Yep, they need people, yeah. There are a handful of people that are partially active, but you'll see, as you look through this, I mean, the only active thing that they've really done the last couple of years is a couple of five hundred dollar scholarships. So they really do need some people to initiate some discussion with them.
How viable is the email list? How, how big is it?
Well, gosh, I'd have to say.
I mean, you got a thousand or five thousand or five hundred or?
I'm going to say approximately somewhere between five and ten thousand people.
I still get emails from the Main West class of sixty-seven, our fifty-fifth and last reunion is Thursday. Last.
They're having a wheelchair race.
But, but, but one of the things, one of the things that goes out is, you know, classmates we've lost track of. Who do you know?
Right.
You know, so you kind of expand on that. I just wondered how viable it is.
Right, but what we're trying to do is capture, capture the audience of today, right? Now, I don't think so much alumni, but who?
Well, alumni may have more money though.
True.
You want to catch.
But, but like, for example, with the foundation, there could be stuff where I saw that in the, in the, in RevTrack, which is the web store, right? You guys have a link, but it's not live. So if it went live, then that could be communicated, say like on a Friday newsletter or a monthly and then.
That's a good job for you.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do it. But wait.
Get her in touch with these people.
So if we have, so starting off with this website that I saw that is not active, right? That's, that's a problem right there for me because that should be an active link that, that way parents can share. And even if it's, you're just donating ten bucks, but you know what? Ten bucks adds up, right? This link should be linked during registration, right at the end or at the, you know, like somewhere in there where you can direct people. Like, there's all sorts of ways that we can really vamp this up and not have it just sitting there and it's a like, oh, well, we have a foundation, but the, you know, we don't really use it. I mean, that's just a poor excuse to me.
Yeah, I think the, the, my impression is the foundation board would appreciate if there's, um, if someone on the school board, uh, would be interested in talking to them about, you know, ideas that they have for the future and and maybe if there can be some more communication between the boards.
Football's real big right now. How about an alumni football team? Have them come back. Track them and have them come back from, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years ago.
We just need to get in touch with these people. You know who they are, Jean.
Are you okay if we connect to them?
These ladies out there can join me too.
They're kind of bored.
I doubt that.
Okay.
Okay, we got a plan.
Okay.
All right.
So with that said, that concludes the discussion I was hoping to accomplish today, which we did. If there are any other topics that the board would like to discuss or have administration present at the next stakeholders committee? No?
You know, at, at some point, so yes, actually, since you mentioned it.
Yep.
At some point, I remember us identifying and, and talking about this and all the wealth of local businesses that we have that we're blessed with here in the greater Gurnee area. So seeing that it's the stakeholders committee, at some point, I would love to see the, the plan at some point. I know it can't all happen at once, but how we connect with all those businesses in a way maybe we haven't in the past.
Chamber of Commerce?
Have regular meetings. They do ribbon cuttings.
Exchange club, Rotary?
Well, Exchange Club's huge.
Yeah.
Rotary, I've been to one meeting. I'm sure they.
All right, well, thank you. That's all we have for the stakeholders committee today.
Onto the, uh, student committee. So Kathy Blair and I are the facilitators of this committee, but I'll take lead today and she will support me uh, in these conversations. And I think we have two items to talk about today, one of which is, uh, the curriculum guide or curriculum update, and the other is safety, since that is a large topic at the moment. And I believe, uh, on the curriculum guide, curriculum update side, that Mr. Geo Karas is giving a brief presentation.
So I thought it'd be a good, just a jumping off point for the committee to kind of start with our processes, uh, some information, uh, things that are kind of out there right now and what we're going to be dealing with as we start the, uh, those we bring the curriculum guide forward, um, to the board in October. I know Kathy and John have participated in that committee before. Uh, so like internally, a lot of those processes with the lead teachers will still kind of go in place, but I just want to share what that process looks like. Kind of provide some information about what's going on at the state level right now that impacts some of the decisions that we have to make. Uh, and we'll take it and answer any questions, uh, from the board. So starting with graduation requirements, uh, so that's our policy six three hundred, uh, is our school graduation requirements. Those are always found in our curriculum guide and in our parent student handbook. There's eighteen and a half credits grad required for graduation. Remember the board, uh, we put that into place permanently uh, in June of twenty twenty-one. So that right up there, four credits of English, uh, one semester each has to be English one, two or three, or one, two and three. Three credits of mathematics, uh, meaning one year of algebra, algebra one, one year with geometry content. Two credits in science, three credits in social studies. And that means two semesters of freshman social studies, two semesters of U.S. history, one semester of government and civics and one semester of economics. Four credits of life fitness, uh, that includes the semester of health. One credit of fine arts, which is in, can be in any of our elective areas. And then one and a half credits of other electives. So that's eighteen and a half credits, uh, a student over four. So, that's eighteen and a half credits. A student over four years here, taking usually between six or seven classes a semester, would usually finish between 24 and 28 credits over their time here, but eighteen and a half credits is all that they need to graduate. Levels of courses. So, our, our most rigorous courses are at the AP Advanced Placement Level, or Dual Credit. Dual Credit is starting to become much more common in schools. That's where we partner with, a lot of times, with College of Lake County, to offer classes that, here, taught by our teachers, that are the same classes that are taught at CLC. So, some examples of that are Honors Ling and Comp Class for our seniors in English, and then our Honors Earth Science Class, which is a senior, a senior science elective. Those are two of our first entries into the Dual Credit here at Warren. Then AP, we have a very robust, very successful AP program with lots of different offerings and different access levels for many, many students. Honors? Yes.
While, while the window's going away, I genuinely don't know, what's the, like, AP is college credit. Dual-
Is also college credit.
Is college credit.
Correct.
I don't understand how they're different.
So, Dual Credit, in my opinion, Dual Credit is more valuable, because Dual Credit comes on a CLC transcript, saying you have three credit hours in English. English 121 from College of Lake County. A lot of times now, with AP, while it's valuable, but a kid might take an AP Ling exam, pass it, take it to a college. The college might say, you know, you got a three. AP says that's good, but it doesn't count. Or, it might take and say, you know what? That's great that you've got an English credit. For us, that's an elective. So, it's much harder to argue that when you have a transcript from a college.
So, it's, it behooves Warren to develop as many Dual Credit classes as possible.
That's correct. The, the challenge with Dual Credit, though, is teacher credentialing. So, where for AP, they just have to be certified by the state of Illinois to teach high school in that content area. When you talk about Dual Credit, they have to, there's, there's now credentialing requirements from the Illinois State Board of Higher Education. So, in the core areas, they have to have a master's degree in the content area, or a master's degree and then another 18 hours in the content area.
That's great. Thank you.
So, how do we support the teachers so they have the right credentials for Dual Credit?
That's something that the district probably needs to begin looking at, and how we can incentivize and provide pathways for teachers to gain that, gain access to those classes. With the expansion of Dual Credit, there's more and more cohorts that are popping up here through Sarah Stashke, where CLC's doing a great job of bringing, like, SIU Carbondale in. They ran, they're running a math master's program right now for area high school teachers.
We look into, you know, what, how we can, how we, how we can provide that to our faculty.
Yeah, most, most of our incentive programs for further degrees have been kind of general and broad-based, so we support staff members for furthering their, their own degree. Many of our staff just have either a Leadership Master's Degree or Curriculum Instruction Master's Degree, and so we haven't, in the past, really incentivized, incentivized those content-specific master's degrees.
And our tuition reimbursement is also $1,000 a year, whereas these courses are $1,000 a credit hour. So, there's also, there's some cost to that.
I also think this is something we can keep in mind as we go through our strategic planning process. If this flushes out as an area of need, then we can probably brainstorm a few different ways to help our staff, if it helps us as a district.
There's a lot of other districts right now having these same conversations, Tony.
Sure.
Uh, so, I know Mundaline is looking at ways to help create incentive programs for teachers and help get more teachers to go through that credentialing. It's a conversation that's everywhere right now.
Yep, and it's only going to help us as hiring staff becomes harder and harder, so the more we can support our staff and allow them to develop, and, and for us to gain some of that, that everybody wins in that scenario, so.
That's where, that's where those cohorts are coming through. We actually partnered with University Center to, when we stood up Ling and Comp, because there's a process that I worked through with CLC that analyzed the teacher credentials that we have, their, their graduate-level coursework. CLC reviews it. They tell us what, how far along our teachers are towards that 18 credit hours. And then, we were able to work with University Center over at, over at University Center over there to stand up an English program to help our, you know, two or three teachers get the last few credit hours they needed.
Thank you.
Just a quick note on that. You know, we always say that Warren leads with excellence, so I don't, so in order to really lead with excellence, I think that we have to really look at how we're going to incorporate these things to really allow our teachers to lead with excellence.
And Warren's right now serving as, how we, the process that we went through to bring in Ling, Honors Ling and Comp, is now the model for every school that CLC is working with. So, the process that Sarah and us developed together, that's what everybody is now doing to make sure that they bring on the Dual Credit classes appropriately.
Something to be proud of. Go ahead and continue.
All right. So, that's AP and Dual Credit. Honors are, again, rigorous classes that kind of lead to those AP and Dual Credit classes as you kind of move through a course sequence. College Prep is our regular-level courses. College Core, we do not have very many of those any longer, but those are our remedial courses. Descriptions of those are found on page 15 in the Curriculum Guide, and it kind of breaks down, like, what does it mean, like, in terms of workload, homework amounts, assessments, types of activities, things like that. We have that in the Curriculum Guide, just to help parents make informed decisions and students make informed decisions when they're picking courses.
Kid is failing?
Yep.
How do they get into College Core? Is they assigned to that, or is that voluntary, or what is that?
Um, if a student is failing, we have, that, usually, we're working through the Student Services Department. We don't really, based on their previous coursework, we might change what level of course they're at in the following year through the course selection process. We might change a student's course, like, level during, over the course of the year, but we really do not offer a lot of remedial courses for students, because we don't want students in those courses. Students go into remedial courses behind, and then they get further behind in those courses. So, what we do is we add supports and keep students in the college prep level, and add supports around them through our AIM Program, through our Content Area Interventionists, working with Student Services. We run study tables after school. Our teachers work resource rooms and our, and also work, meet with all those kids one-on-one, to make sure that we get to do our best, the best we can to get those kids through. We do have some, and if there is, you know, if a student would fit that criteria, would help them, we do put them in there, but we really try to keep our kids in the college prep classes as much as we can. All right, so, the annual curriculum process. So, here's kind of how that flow works. It really kind of kicks off in January, is when we start. So, in January, I release the forms for the upcoming fall. So, the, the lead teachers and departments get new course proposals, curriculum revision forms, new textbook selection forms, things that we need to know as the Instructional Services Department, so we can begin planning for the following year. And they've got the spring to turn the, to complete those forms and turn them in. So, those are submitted in May. That gives the administration, over the summer, to me and Matt, and Matt Jones and Peter Cuff, for a chance over the summer to work with Rob and Michelle and review those proposals, what came in, what we needed to have out of that. Did we get everything? Is everything in line? Also, then, in June, we go back through all the legislative changes that came from the state and make sure that we, out of all of our new course and curriculum proposals, we have all of those accounted for, and we kind of, just kind of do a quick audit to make sure we have everything. And then, in August, when everybody comes back, we circle back with those lead teachers. If we need anything new submitted, we work with those lead teachers to help them get it submitted. Otherwise, we start finalizing the Curriculum Guide and getting any little changes, updates that departments want to make, maybe to update a curriculum, a course description or something like that. Little changes, we, there's a process that is in, going on right now. Then, we kind of, at this time of year, we're talking to you guys tonight, and then, after our meeting tonight, I'll be meeting with all of our lead teachers in the next couple of weeks to talk about a lot of the same things we're talking about tonight, and to kind of bring forward the Curriculum Guide changes to them, get their eyes on it, make sure that everybody feels good about where we're headed, and then we will bring that to you for approval in October. And then, in November, course selection begins, and then we do it all again in January.
Nice overview. Um, this was good. It, it's a nice reminder of the cyclical nature of what you do every year. Do you feel, um, here's just an oddball question. First off, do you have any additional slides, or is that it?
Got to, we're kicking into the state stuff next, so we can, we can, if it's local curriculum stuff, we talk about that first. It's a good pause point.
No, just a comment. Like, it, to me, this is very standard practice year after year, but hopefully, there is opportunity in all this to do voice and do something really radically different at times, too. Like, I get teachers submit is part of the process, but in order to be cutting-edge, or creative, or different, or new, my hope for you, and it's not a, it's just a comment, not a response kind of thing, is that there's opportunity in there if you so chose.
One, one thing I didn't, one thing I didn't highlight in, in this, though, is that we do bring in student voice. Student voice is required as part of the curriculum submission process. So, that is something that when they bring forward a curriculum change, when they bring forward a new course proposal, that is something that they have to have surveyed, the teachers bringing that forward have to have surveyed students to find interest.
Could be content of the class. It could be topics we wouldn't historically teach. It could be format of a course, and I know some of the, you know, I, I just, I just want to be sure that you're given the allowance to, you know, if, to do something different. Go ahead and talk about history now.
All right. So, let's talk about the state-mandated curriculum updates. So, there have been a flood of legislative mandates from downstate over the last three years. So, the newly ones, the ones that we implemented newly this year are US History, updated their curriculum to include the contributions of Asian-Americans to the United States, Illinois and the Midwest from the 19th century onward. In our Government and Civics classes, we have included the Media Literacy Skills Unit, so a new mandate. We have to teach media literacy skills. So, there's a difference here between computer literacy and media literacy. So, media literacy is the ability of students to evaluate the content that they interact with online and in print and in video. So, understand how to interact with the information around you.
Tech.
That is-
I don't want to teach that one.
That is an important skill. That is an important skill for our kids. So, our Government and Civics class and our AP Government class have taken that on, so our sophomores are getting that, that instruction. English 2 is going to take the computer literacy, the intensive computer literacy instruction. So, Illinois received, released computer literacy standards, and basically, we have to just embed those in the curriculum. One class through in the high school curriculum just has to have that formally embedded in the curriculum. So, right now, our English 2, that has to be done for, kind of, starting this year, or we're doing that work this year and in effect next year.
Are you talking anything more than, than word processing with that? I mean, any data or Excel or, or anything?
Uh, in that context, it, it's more productivity, a little bit of Excel, but that's more like productivity, word processing type things. It's not, not getting a ton into computer science or programming.
Graphics? None, none of that?
No. So, that, that falls more in the computer science, CTE, part of things. Upcoming mandates in 2029, this is a very, very important one, because this really impacts course, course, student course selection. Beginning in 2029, all students entering ninth grade that year must complete at least two years of foreign language. So, at that point, our graduation requirements will change, so every kid that's a freshman that year will have to have two credits of foreign language. So, at that point, we'll have to have a conversation about, do we remain in 18 and a half credits? Do we now go back up? You know, how does that impact electives, course selections, and offerings? Because while a lot of our kids do take world language, they do take Spanish, not all of our kids do, and a lot, not all of our kids take it for two years.
Do they have to have it before they enter ninth grade?
No, no, no. Once they, that, that ninth grade class in 2029, that's the first class that we'll have to have that as a graduation requirement. Any questions on those before we go to the next one?
Stop a Hispanic kid from taking Spanish?
Uh, we don't, we would not put a, a student that's a native speaker in a Spanish 1 or Spanish 2 class. We have a-
The wall question.
You know, we have, we have a program called Spanish Language Arts and Culture for our heritage speakers and students that are from the dual-language program at, that came through the dual-language program at Woodland. All those students enroll in that class, and then they're actually accelerated in there, where they could earn, they, satisfy the world language requirement for the SEAL by literacy by the end of their sophomore year. We're allowing them an option this year, and those in the Honors, Spanish Language Arts and Culture 2 can self-study for AP Spanish Ling, and if they get that, and if they do that and take the test and pass it, they can enroll in AP Spanish Lit next year. So, there's a whole different track of curriculum for students.
In the interest of, if you will, in the interest of fairness, you, I don't know what percentage of, of foreign language at-home students you have in this district, but I suspect it's pretty high. And you have a, a student that's speaking a different language at home, and is basically, to one degree or another, probably struggling to learn English. You're going to force them to learn a third language?
No. No, it wouldn't. They would be, so if they were an English learner, so they would have their EL courses, and so if they hadn't met the English language proficiency, proficiency target, they would be in EL program, which would be, that would satisfy core requirements, English, Math, Science, Social Studies. Any other questions?
Great.
Okay, so the next biggest thing is the Automatic Accelerated Placement. So, last year, we adopted 6135, new version of that, and what this says is that students who meet or exceed state standards will be automatically enrolled in the next most rigorous level of advanced coursework. So, a student in that is a sophomore, let's say, in geometry, and they meet or exceed the, and the state did clarify now, it's the college, the college board's benchmark. So, the student got a 520 on their PSAT 9. When they pick their courses this fall, they will select, they will be automatically enrolled in Honors Algebra 2 Tric. So, if a student meets or exceeds when they pick their courses, so the, the next course in the sequence, they will move up a level automatically. So, if they're in English 2 and they met or exceeded, they will go to Honors English 3. If there's no, for the senior year, if they're in, if they meet or exceed, they will go to AP or Dual Credit. So, there's a huge ripple effect to that. We are working on our plan. We're consulting with a lot of districts who are trying to untangle this. We were, we had met with the state a lot last year. We thought we were going to have more guidance from the state. The state did not give us any more guidance, so, shocking.
Shocked by that.
Shocking. So, we are, we're working through it. So, some of the challenges in this is, you have, you can use the most recently administered state assessment. Okay, so that's why my example, a sophomore is picking their junior-level classes using their freshman state test. At the time of that course selection, that test data isn't that old, just to be clear. Like, we're going to pick courses in late October and November. That test is from late April, so it's not that old, but that test then is placing a student in a course that they'll take a year and a half after they took the, took the test. So, then, the other piece of that is our freshmen, we do not want to be using our IAR scores from eighth grade for our current freshmen to pick classes for sophomore year. So, we are going to start administering the STAR test, which is a test we already use with our freshmen for academic growth, and to help kind of find, identify students who might need interventions and when they no longer need those interventions. And then, we are going to be working with the center districts on a plan for our incoming freshmen and how to use what scores from there. Probably going to use something along the lines of an eighth-grade map. The challenge in that, the thing that I'm not wild about, is Michelle and her team did a fantastic job over the past several years of removing test scores as a placement practice for our incoming freshmen, and using test scores as part of understanding the big picture, holistic picture of a student and what courses they should sign up for. So, we're, we still have some things to work through on that process. But it will involve us still creating a few courses, because in Engli, Junior Year English and Junior Year Social Studies are back. In Junior Years, English, Junior Year Social Studies, we don't have an Honors-level course. We have a very small Honors American Studies, it was about 100 kids, so we're going to be adding two new courses, in Honors English 3 and in Honors US History, to meet the needs of the, of the Automatic Accelerated Placement. The one thing that's important to note is parents can enroll students in what the law deems an alternative education program that is more in line with the student's post-secondary and career goals. So, the parent is the, can opt out of the Automatic Accelerated Placement. So, that is one thing that we're working through right now, is how are other districts approaching that? How do other, how are we going to communicate that with our parents to make sure that we have students assigned into the proper places? Because while this is a well-intended rule, as a whole, our district place, our district placement practices do not throw up barriers. We do everything we can to get kids in the most rigorous classes possible. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we challenge our kids to take challenging classes, but we also want to make sure that our kids are taking challenging classes in the areas that, you know, that make- Um but we also want to make sure that our kids are taking challenging classes in the areas that, you know, that make sense to them. So if if I'm, you know, one of those kids that I want to take an honors class, I don't love English, but I love math. Well, take the honors class in math. Under this law, like you'd just be in honors everything as long as you pass the test. So there's some cha- there's some ra- although well-intentioned, there's some repercussions in this that we have to just be, be thoughtful about.
Is there any? Related to that, is there any evaluation given to kids in terms of how much they can handle?
Um so students, when they pick courses, they, you know, there's teacher recommendation. Uh we encourage uh participation from parents, counselors work with students to help pick those courses. Uh but we do, we do talk to kids and parents about like balance and making sure that we're understanding the workload of courses that we're se- that we're selecting. Um so that that's kind of the the big thing from the state. So that'll, that, because that, while that technically goes into effect next year, that impacts our course selection process that begins here. So we're working on that. Right now, when I see you guys again um in October, uh we'll, I'll probably have an update for you on what that's going to look like with a little bit more specifics. But right now, we're really trying to, trying to collaborate with a lot of other districts and kind of learn from one another and and make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing for our kids. So strategic plan updates, uh Danny has talked a lot about the things that he wants us to continue to focus on. One of those things that falls into my area is in continuing to increase the dual credit. Um we talked a little bit about that earlier, so we will be adding dual credit chemistry next year. That'll be a new course that's coming, uh will come through in the curriculum guide. That's a lab-based chemistry course and it really is applied uh for students considering health sciences or nursing. So it's uh it's a general chemistry course at CLC, uh but it, a lot of their health sciences, um a lot of their health sciences uh students take it. Dual credit administrative management and technology, where we are meeting with CLC tomorrow. That is um a, our Microsoft Office certification, so our Tech Academy program. Uh the, the credentialing for some CTE areas is not as rigorous as it is for Core. So we have some opportunity to increase dual credit in our business program. Um we already have some articulated credit in our business program. That's where a kid would earn a college credit if they enrolled at CLC. Um so we're gonna, we're gonna have some dual credit available in our Tech Academy certifications and Tech Academy Plus classes next year. Uh dual credit environmental science, we're working on kind of a new concept right now where we would stack AP Environmental and uh CLC's A- uh environmental course. So in order to make sure that we can do that, we need to conduct a curriculum audit. Uh the teacher that's interested in teaching that course is doing that right now. We're going to see how far away we are and we're either going to be able to bring that forward in October to have another dual credit course in science that's lumped in with something we already do. Um or it'll wait, wait a year and we'll figure out how we can get it done. But we're excited about that because that would take kids that are in AP Environmental Science and now they would get the dual credit for it. And if they wanted to take the AP exam at the end, they could also take the AP exam and kind of get it both ways. Um and then dual credit education, we are looking for a start in that in twenty four, twenty five. This one, uh we are developing a program proposal with Carthage College. Uh so that would be a four-course sequence, starting with students junior year. It would be four courses, two junior year, two senior year. Uh sixteen total credit hours, uh which with emphasis on preparing teacher candidates to work in diverse schools and urban settings, K-12. So students would complete those four courses. That would also come with automatic enrollment in the teacher education program at Carthage College and potentially some uh some significant financial aid as well. So it's a great opportunity for partnership there. Uh legally in the state, there's some hoops that we have to jump through because Carthage is out of state. So we're, we're still working through that, that's why.
Wisconsin, so.
It's Wisconsin, yes.
But, oh, what's that? I know, it's Wisconsin and private, so there's something, it's, but the concept though, that's the kind of stuff that I think gets probably a few of us excited here, if not more, just because that's, it feels different, it feels unique. It fills a, it's like a, it's a pathway to potential employment instead of just taking classes for the sake of taking classes, it benefits the kids. I love that kind of stuff.
Um yeah, the hurdle, the hurdle there is because since they're out of state, it's not necessarily that they're private. Uh but what, since they're out of state, we have to build a proposal, we have to send it to CLC. CLC has to say, no, we can't do that. And then we send it to Illinois Board of Higher Education. Everybody in Illinois will say, no, we can't do that. And then we'll be able to go and the, the, the deal, what we think is, what we're hanging our hat on with it too is and this is what I really was excited about this program is there is no prerequisite from Carthage for students to participate in that program. There is no prerequisite. So a student that has a one point two GPA, but just all of a sudden decides, I think I want to be a teacher, they can take, go through that program and then complete sixteen credit hours of, through Carthage and have enrollment at Carthage.
Interesting. Maybe that's a perk of being private though too, because they can bend rules that public sometimes can't, so. Um, good.
I'm, I'm a little confused. How does, Carthage is not exactly urban.
They have, it's a pri- it's a private university. Uh they have an urban education program, uh uh urban education department. Uh so their, their goal is to put kids in urban schools. So Racine Unified, um they work with Racine Unified for placements. They work with Kenosha Unified of replacements. Both those school districts are extremely diverse and they, Kenosha is the third largest school district in the state of Wisconsin. And Racine is the fifth largest school district in the state. So they have large school systems that they're putting teacher candidates in.
Way we could do that with Waukegan or Zion or whatever?
Um with our placements, for our students that are in those classes, they will have to do some clinicals. Uh and we've already talked to District fifty-six, um they're looking at doing some different type of work with Carthage. Uh and we spoke a little bit with fifty, uh just to try and work with our center districts to have our kids go out to our center districts, work with the kids in elementary schools. Cause the whole idea behind this is we want to get our kids in education here in Lake County, working uh where, where we need help. Um so strategic planning update, uh career pathway endorsements. Uh so again, this is something that's uh kind of, it's a strategic planning update and it's also a state requirement. Uh so we next, beginning with the class of twenty twenty-seven, we have to have at least one career pathway endorsement identified for, for students to be able to earn. Not that every student has to earn it, but have it available to them. And then it expands up to three over several years. Um so what it is, is you got to have at least six, uh the whole program needs to have at least six hours of early college credit, part of it. You need, it needs to include sixty cumulative hours of paid or credit supervised career developments, like an internship. Needs to have sixty hours of a specific internship, usually part of work-study or something like that. It can be a paid job, but that gets a little bit trickier. Um and they need to have uh be considered college career ready in reading and mathematics uh by the time they finish high school. So how that gets developed then is you have, we develop an individualized plan for each kid. So a, a kid would do a career interest inventory during the freshman year. We do that already for every kid takes that. We have to do that for our CC, our college career readiness indicator program for the state. As a result of that individualized plan, there's seven diff- seven different career pathways that students can, that we could end up having available. Right now, the one that makes the most sense for us is in the health sciences field. Uh Danny and I are starting to work through all the available pathways and what we have in place, since we do have so many programs, we already are very close in many areas. So we're just trying to figure out what do we have, what, what can we use? The tech campus is a huge, uh huge deal in this, but we also want to be able to offer career pathways in-house so our students can take advantage of it um without having to go to tech campus for three periods. So an example of that's like health sciences pathway. There's multiple path, in a pathway endorsement of health sciences, there's multiple plans that can get you that endorsement, right? You can go to tech campus, do all the things, go to tech campus and get, and complete a CN, a CNA program and earn a pathway endorsement. Or you can come through here, um participate in a future medical doctors club, do uh be an AP bio, uh take um uh AP calculus and do a couple of other things. And you would have the health sciences pathway endorsement as well, but maybe it's like a, a, a pre-medicine pathway endorsement. So there, there's a lot of different opportunities. There's an application process from the state that they are continuing to develop. Uh so, but this is kind of the, this is their graphic. Uh it's a great opportunity for our kids. Again, I love that it takes career interests in, to account from an early age and helps us to choose courses that are in line with what ki- kids think their career goals are. And when we were talking, we had a big meeting uh with a lot of people from the area last week. One of the things we were talking about is one of the best benefits of this is they might say, say they start down that health sciences pathway and they get June, get through their junior year and they're like, wow, I hate this. Well, now they know, right? And we didn't, we, we didn't spend two years in college figuring out that I don't want to go into a health sciences field. So there's, even if they don't complete the endorsement, there's benefit in going through that and changing course while you're in high school in a, a lower stakes environment.
This is great. Um what's, I like the keeping some of this at home too, because that commitment of three periods I know has stopped people from taking classes at the tech campus. So if it can be achieved here as well.
Which is why the dual credit increase, increasing the dual credit is so important because that is where we will struggle to finish the pathway, because everything at tech campus is dual credit or articulated.
The other things I liked from what you heard is uh, or from what I heard is the uh y- yes, finding areas where we're closest to meeting that, but also it's nice when you know, we don't live in a silo, we live in a community, larger community. So like uh areas of need, um if health sciences is a great example of that because that's a identified area where there's potential future employment. And what I like even more than that, and this is going back to Steve's point, although not required, whenever we can fill the pipeline potentially of our local communities, so Lake County, so we can make connections with those uh with the, the Condels and the Abbots and the, you know, all these larger employers that and just give our kids a leg up on uh whether that's internships or a initial job or just, I, I love how, where this is going. And for those that don't want to head that direction, they're welcome to
Yep.
head a different direction. So anyway, encouragement to tie some of these even further with, and I'm sure you've already done that and thought about it, but all those large employers that are going to have and are currently having staffing shortages that may actually listen now that didn't maybe a few years ago.
Yeah, and there's pathways in, in engineering, in uh M-Tech, which is uh
Right.
machining, technology.
Right.
Uh like the dual credit flip back, because the dual credit education, that will give us a pathway.
Say the Carthage one will give you a pathway too, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't want to believe in this, but I know restaurants that are half full. Training levels on that level, if a kid wants to go into a nutritional.
Food service.
Uh tech campus has food service programs.
They uh, I think cater like the golf course over on, on Braylock and some other things to get tangible.
Yeah.
The, the other thing that I'd encourage you as a board to think about is uh sometimes you have students that are interested in a really hands-on approach like a food service. Something that's good uh to consider in a pathway program is to partner that with an on, some type of business or entrepreneurship program. Uh just to make sure that we have credentials that are building and uh can open doors in the future and, and we're preparing kids to do what they want to do out of high school, but then also keep going in some type of business.
Our post-secondary counselors do an excellent job of connecting kids with interests, um finding internships. Uh we've partnered with a group called Applicant Advantage to help our kids uh build professional resumes and the pro- online profiles to help find uh internship, paid internships here as well. And our, that's one of the services our post-secondary counselors do. So as we build these programs up, the training and care will be a huge part of how we sell that process and how we get kids through that process.
So do you have more slides?
That's it.
Okay.
You keep track of all of them and give them to the alumni group.
I love the tie-in. Alright, uh I think rather than follow-up cla- uh questions, I think we answered them along the way. Unless, uh Steve, Natalia, John, Kathy, do you have any further questions for Chris? If not, then in the interest of keeping this moving, I think we'll switch to safety.
Alright, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chris. Good presentation. Alright, so the second half of this was safety. Uh there's been a lot of interest, especially with the events that happened over summer. Is Warren doing everything that it should? This conversation, there's kind of two sides to this conversation. There's the general conversation of things that we would like to see the administration and district do or our feelings. Um and then there's probably the more specific ones that really have no business being spoken about here in open session for safety of our staff as well as students. So we might have to navigate this conversation carefully. And we might have to put some of these conversation topics into closed session. Um just do the sensitivity of the topic. Doesn't mean we shouldn't discuss it, it's just we shouldn't discuss it right here. So Danny, do, we don't have a presentation for safety, correct?
Correct.
It's just a generic discussion? Okay, and it was mainly driven by us. I think we're the ones that said that we wanted to see further discussion on this. And I think part of that was also in the context of a comprehensive safety review and potentially doing another one um in the same vein we did one years ago, just to see if there's any new areas identified. So with that being said, uh I know there's only five of us here, but.
Wasn't Dr. Ke- weren't, Dr. Keeley, weren't you going to get a um, an estimate on how much it costs? Oh, you did?
I got the ID.
Okay.
Yeah, mid twenties.
I would imagine the laws of supply and demand, like right now, everybody's interested, like these consultants probably have more work than they have ability to meet. And probably accord, uh price that accordingly too, so. Yep, yep. Yep.
Yeah, mid twenties is what it was.
So I guess maybe let's just start there. There was, I remember, I don't remember who, but someone said maybe we should, actually no, I think it was someone who's not here. Said that maybe we should accelerate and think about doing this again. Are, are there people here at this table that feel that that's a priority for the district? I mean, I know safety's a priority, but having the same consultant potentially come out and.
I think things change fairly rapidly in this, in this uh realm as things happen and people react to those things that happen and how they happen and why they happen and why this one is different than, that why Uvalde is different from Sandy Hook and this one's over there, whatever. And I think there are some changes that would behoove us to stay on top of. I think there's no question about that.
I don't. So.
I don't have any specific on top of my mind what those would be, but I think, you know, doing it again certainly can't hurt us.
Well, that's the point of bringing in the consultants, they would.
Reiterate.
Yeah.
Before we start spending more money, which we're, we'd like to on safety and security, then we we should look at doing whatever is the latest and the greatest thoughts and technology, whatever that would be.
So if nothing else, it's a small, it's not small, but it's, it's comparison to some of the safety improvements that we would be doing, it's probably a good investment to see if these are wise dollars spent. Cause some of these solutions, particularly the automated ones that are building wide, I mean, we're, we could be talking a hundred thousand dollars plus easily for some of these things. So um, okay, so if I'm understanding the nods of the five of us here, it sounds like that's the answer. Um both Pat and Danny that uh a specific timing?
How long would it take?
Well, it probably depends on his availability. Did Ken, did the, well, I think I can say his name because it would have been impro- uh Ken Trump. Is, was he the one that actually did ours? Or did it wasn't a partner of his? Okay. Right. So maybe the answer is if we want the same person, because theoretically they would know, although he's probably done a thousand schools in between then and now, but like he would, his report, he would be able to go around and do a check to be sure what he recommended was implemented and because he does so many and he is a name, a big name out there, I would imagine he's very familiar with the latest guidance and what most people are doing as far as solutions, I would think. So could the next step, um Steve, be just seeing his availability and a potential quote? Or do we need to be, and maybe this is a question for Mike, do we need to go to RFP for something like this? Right. Problem is the exceed is twenty-five thousand, right? Probably where he's at. Right. So unless this is an exempt, there's a couple of areas that are exempt under bidding law and if, I'm not sure if this one is or not.
We can look into that.
This is exempt. So maybe you could, somebody on your guys' side could, administration could check with him and availability and a quote to send back to us preferably before the next board meeting.
It's one thing if next board meeting you can say we can get him in. It's another thing if he says I'm busy for the next six months.
Yeah.
Those are two different.
We need to find somebody else.
Okay.
Okay.
Assuming we would go to RFP, because I don't think we have a relationship with anybody else.
Well, okay, I want to throw out the bomb.
But then maybe we wait the six months, say he says it's in six months, do we wait the six months because he's our preferred consultant?
Okay. Yeah. Steve, what's, you, you have a question or comment?
Strongly about this one, and I've done some homework over the last couple of days, and I talked to the sheriff and several under sheriffs, and we could have an officer in here for ten thousand dollars a month in two weeks.
That's different than having a, you're talking two different things now. You're, he's talking now about.
I'm talking about a Band-Aid until we find out what we need to do.
He's talking about the resource officer that we don't have, that the sheriff would send us a resource.
We could get a sheriff's officer in here for eight and a half hours a day at our choosing. He would be here with no car. He'd be here, uh, or, or plane, whichever. We'd have one in each school. And I would suggest to you that we strongly consider that in lieu of what you're talking about, because what you're talking about is going to take, I don't know how long. And if somebody comes in here and does something to this place, and I don't want to get too specific, I don't want to be sitting here thinking I could have done this.
Sure. So, uh, just so everybody's, uh, understands the context, right now, we have in the past had two SRO officers, one at each campus. Right now, we're just down to one. And a, a lot of that comes down to staffing with the police department here in Gurnee. Um, so I think, uh, you looked, you talked to the sheriff's.
I, I talked to Gurnee, and they said, Steve, we'd love to, but it isn't a question of money, it's a question of we don't have the bodies. So, obviously, I'm familiar with the sheriff's office, and I called some people that I know over there, and I got a quote, which I sent to you, which was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year, or whatever. Now, I'm sure we could set up something month by month, until if and when this consultant says, no, we need to do something else, but in the meantime, we need to do something.
But what's one, what's one officer going to do if something really happens? He's going to get shot, and then what?
A lot better than.
If we don't implement what we're supposed to implement to make the school as a whole, safety versus one.
He's not talking either or. He's talking about doing the, he's talking about doing the police officer now. Which we're going to do another SRO officer when Gurnee could do it anyway, right? I mean, that was our thought process.
We would, yeah, yeah.
I believe that was in the cards.
Yeah, we're not, we're not against two SROs. We would love to have.
I know that Seadoll does it. I know that, um, oh, there was another one.
And he's not talking about doing this and not that. He's just saying, do this now.
I'm talking, I have nothing but understanding and sympathy for what you're talking about doing. My only question is, what are we doing in the meantime?
Yeah, the, uh, so, in my, uh, if I were to reflect upon these statements, the SRO or police officer on premise is one part of a comprehensive safety plan. Part of it is our planning and practice. Some of it is hardening of the school and the facilities. The SRO is one piece. I'm not sure it's going to solve everything, but it would cut down on response time if something were to happen. Also being, um, and it might even be a moot point if Ken Trump can come soon. So, there could be a couple scenarios here, uh, being on the, uh, Seadoll side of things that just hit me when you said that. Um, Seadoll's always, uh, financially kind of tough. What if there's an opportunity to share that existing SRO?
Just continue because they can't afford it.
Yeah. Okay, so there you go. Uh, so, uh, always looking for shares, but, um, if we were to, I, I guess, tonight, we wouldn't necessarily, because it's committee of the whole, we wouldn't be voting on anything anyway. Maybe what we send the administration back as a charge to do is to find out how quickly we get Ken out here and doing that, feasibility from the sheriff's office to do a less than one-year contract, because they may not want to. A lot of these places want a year contract. If they don't want to, that might determine something. Yeah, and it could just be as simple as, I know when the sheriff's departments, you know, I, I know they patrol in, in zones, and maybe there's an opportunity there to just kind of narrow the scope of a zone during school hours and school days, and have someone nearby.
There are six zones in Lake County. There are two cars in each zone. They're not going to do much here.
Yeah, but, right, but if, if I remember correctly, I, you know, I live right over there in Gages Lake. There's always two in the Wildwood-Gages Lake area, which is not even a mile, so it's, it's close by. So, maybe, I don't know. There, I'm just saying I don't have a solution for that, and, but there could be, uh, a way for them to analyze where they set their patrols.
I don't mean to be, but Gurnee's in the same zone as North Chicago, okay?
Yeah.
Two cars in that zone.
Yeah, we can, we can look at the feasibility, we can do some work on the feasibility of what Mr. Carlson sent me today.
Yeah, thank you. Is there, just, uh, what else, um, in gen, kind of been open here? Is, safety-wise, have we identified or been thinking about, or anything else we want to discuss from anyone here?
We were talking about hardening the building somewhat with the exits. Where's Chris? Chris?
Yes.
Chris, stop working, will you? Holy cow. You said you were working, last time we talked about this, with some people about hardening the exits and making sure they had, they can swipe in and.
That's right.
And all that stuff.
We're, that's, uh, so the door access system, we're, we're right now, as I gave our vendors and the people we're working with till the end of September.
So, there's something in, currently in play that you're not waiting on, uh?
Which, which makes every door have a, a swipe. So, there's no, exterior doors, that's what I meant.
How do we scale that? Will be up to us, but yeah, like, we will be able to scale it to, ideally, in my mind, like, ideally, we would scale it so every door in this district is fathomable.
Especially outside doors, yeah.
Everything, so if you go, you hit line, like, ultimately, the system ends up working.
Everything talks to the head-end system at that point, yeah. The outside doors are first.
They would all go at the same time.
Yeah.
That's good to hear. Can I, related, um, so my kids have been in activities here and there. High schools in general are just notorious for being open campuses. Kids come and go. There's clubs that come and go, all hours. Forget, school day, I think we do a fabulous job. I, I'm not sure. I mean, I go around and probably find every door locked. After-hours, to me, is more, I've seen, just a little more open.
Lax.
Yeah, more lax. So, you know, kids have late practices. A bus comes back at eight o'clock. Like, do we have the same level of security at those hours that we do during the day, and if? Yeah. Sure. Yeah, so that's something that's been in the back of my head. I don't have an answer for it, but I just know that, you know, we have a lot of kids in different activities. We have outside clubs and sports that come in that may not abide by no or, you know, all of our various rules and prop doors and door stops and things like that. I don't know. But, um, at some point, and maybe that's a Ken Trump conversation, is how do we secure these schools all hours of the day, not just daytime? I know that's when we have the most kids here, but, um, I, I, I think I've picked up on it's a little looser in the evening. All right, I, uh, I think for our committee here, unless anyone has anything else, there may be more specific items that we could go into close for. I'm not sure if we have any right now, though.
Well, I'm, I'm clear.
No.
Uh, we're, we're talking about availability of the consultancy, how long that would be, and then would, depending on that, we'd take other action if we need to.
And not waiting until the next board meeting. So, I, like, an expectation I think I would have is, you know, in, in next, uh, communication or when known, just shoot us an email so we have some kind of update. You know, this is, there's items that can wait until the next month's board meeting. This probably is one that can't. And especially if we need to take action, like some of these things that are being described, we would want to have that prepped for the next board meeting, so, um, because it would likely need a vote. So, yes, the answer is explore, but give us feedback sooner rather than later. All right, uh, I think for the student committee, we're, we'll stop it there. It's late. It's eight fifty-two. I don't think we have anything else for the moment, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Weisman.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add as well.
All right, and then maybe John Anderson.
Okay, then I move to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene at regular meeting.
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, then I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.